Okay.
Okay, so I get punchy after, you know, after.
All right, folks, it is six o'clock, assuming the camera is running. All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Would all please join me with political allegiance? There it is. Political allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everybody, for dodging the raindrops to come tonight. Hopefully, the weather steers clear town. Uh, we have the minutes of September first, what is this the board?
The section.
I'm gonna give it the name. We have a motion by Jeff and a second by Nate. Any changes to the minutes? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Um, public comments? Uh, let's see, a couple of members of the public, anybody have any comments?
Yes, I have some comments.
Uh, we'll go, let you go ahead first, just so you know, because I haven't seen you folks before. Public comments, it's your opportunity to address the board, it's not a question and answer about the board. Please let us know who you are, so we can capture the minutes if you would.
My name is Bill Cargano. I live on North Road, up that way to the north, number one subway. I'm here today to talk to you about COVID-19, the school, and the safety of the kids. I know this board voted three to two to keep masks optional. I think that was a huge mistake. It continues to be even a bigger mistake. Yesterday, the epidemiologist at the state of Hampshire said, oh, the kids in school ought to be masked. CDC has said that for weeks. And you folks haven't done anything. That disturbs me very, very much. I think your first responsibility as elected officials is to make sure the kids are safe. And I believe you're not doing that. That's why I'm here. I think that tonight, you ought to vote to have masks mandatory. Now, I know there are probably some of you here, maybe all of you, who say, oh, no, no, I'm not gonna wear a mask and get mad at each other. But when your kid gets sick, maybe dies, brings home something, you get sick, maybe dying, you gonna be happy? I doubt it. I really doubt that. So I think that you need to act in a positive way. If you don't, then I think you want to die. Amen.
Any other comments from anybody else? Sir, if you could just let us know for the minutes.
All right, my name is Greg Whitmore. I live at 164 North Road. Uh, let me just say, this is the first time I've ever been in this building. Uh, this is my daughter's second year at this school. I haven't been allowed to be in the building. So, this is, that's kind of crazy when you think of it, all right? Um, I'm coming down on the opposite side, where I don't ever want to see my daughter wearing a mask. I looked at the mask matrix that was sent. So there's two versions which are identical. There is the Deerfield version, there is the county version. So, other schools in SAU 53 decided to use county data. I don't understand the reasoning for it. It's dumb, okay? And because of that, masks were implemented in those schools. So I am concerned, I can't predict the future of what's gonna happen at this meeting, but I'm concerned that that's going to happen tonight, that people will say, let's use the county data. If you use the county data, they can't masks for the rest of the year. I mean, if we're going by substantial, it was substantial since the beginning of summer. So I think we really have to look at the local level when we make these decisions. Um, let's see. Per CDC data, August 2020 to 2021, 1,790 kids in the country were hospitalized with COVID. Eight children died in the country. My daughter is more in danger when I drug, when her mother drives her to school in the morning than dying from COVID. I mean, those are the numbers. Per New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, since the pandemic started, there have been 29 children in the state hospitalized with COVID-19 with zero deaths. So if we really want to say we're following scientific data, this is as clear, cut and dry as it gets, all right? I feel that adults are projecting fears upon children. It's been shown time and time again that children are not vectors, children are not spreading. You need to test children to know they even have it, because most of them don't even prevent, present with symptoms. So, you know, we, these are things we really have to take into consideration. If we come down and continue forcing masks, the people on the opposite sides of the fence are just getting more and more entrenched in this. You're not going to convince me that I want a mask on my child. You're not going to convince people who want masks to not have masks on their children. So at the end of the day, public choi, or parent choice is what's important. I know what's best for my family and my child. I mean, we haven't had our ears covered and our eyes covered for the last year and a half. We've weighed every possibility, I've read every possible study there is. And I'm thoroughly convinced that my child is not in danger, but that's my choice. If other people want to mask their children, they can do whatever they want, right? I encourage them to mask their children if they want to, all right? So we have to realize that, you know, these are our children. They're not community children, they're not the school's children, they're not the state's or the country's children. They belong to the parents, right? So please keep that in mind when we, you know, come together and come up with these decisions as far as masking is concerned. All right, and if I have any time left, on a completely unrelated matter, um, I know you're gonna be talking about high school choice. So I really hope that considerations are in place for Raymond. Raymond is starving for children. They're incredibly, uh, you know, I mean, there's just so much space in this school. I think they're only at half capacity right now. So I don't know if it's been discussed, but please consider Raymond. Uh, Pembroke Academy is 300 or so, 250, 300 students under capacity also. So either of those schools, much closer, could absorb the Deerfield students. Um, honestly, I don't want my child going to Concord. The distance, um, and I just, I mean, just what I've heard talking with other parents, I don't, I don't want them going there, you know? So I hope that you consider these other schools. Um, consider giving parents and, you know, kids' choice of school if possible. Could they go to Raymond, could they go to PA, could they go to Concord, is that, you know, and parents just pay the difference tuition-wise if it comes up? Um, and when you're looking at these contracts, could we consider shorter contracts? Instead of 10-year plus, we do five-year, or, you know, whatever it may be. Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments?
Cooper, North Road.
Strong representation from North Road today.
We tried, right?
We covered the whole stretch of it.
This gentleman makes, I think, extremely valid points, and he says that, you know, I may not convince him, he may not convince me. I don't think it's gonna change, and I think that he is approaching it, and I'm not trying to say the others, you made some really good points. Um, he's doing what he thinks is best for his child. And conversely, I'm gonna try to do what's best for my child. Where I think that I personally differ, and it's not at you, it's just that your points kind of align separately from where I'm at, is when you look at the data, I don't think we should look at necessarily county data either, even if you look at just Deerfield. The standard for CDC high transmission is, I believe it's 100 per 100,000. And last time we were here, at seven cases, we were over that metric. Since then, we've gone from seven to 18, floated back to 14. Wherever we're at, we're double the transmission when you take the county data out. So if you're looking locally, we're past it. Um, as far as stats, you can look at stats a whole bunch of different ways, right? And so I try not to lean into them too much, you know? You are, have a higher likelihood of passing away if you go to the hospital if you're not feeling well. That's because you're not feeling well enough so that you go to the hospital. People that aren't that sick stay home, right? So stats can look a couple of different ways. One of the stats that gets brought up is, you know, the mortality rate or the hospital rate for children, it's lower. Um, it is lower in the grand scheme of things. It's higher for the adults, so one of the things you have to look at is, are they passing it along to the adults? Because the adults that are in the building with the children, they are also at risk. And we also have adults in the households at home. So while the child may not be affected, the immunocompromised grandparent or guardian that is with the child could be affected. Um, and as far as like, you know, using like the car accident analogy, you know, statistically, you may not be wrong. Maybe it is safer to drive to school versus COVID. Uh, but the difference is, is if one student gets into a car accident, that car accident can't be caught by other students that are waiting in line. So we have to look at the transmission effect to it. Um, I don't think there's necessarily an answer that's going to appease everyone, right? If you say that masks are gonna be mandated, uh, people are gonna be upset. Conversely, on my side, I prefer that it's not optional. I wish my kids went to school, and it's not even so much because I think it's the safest thing. Um, that's a big part of it. The main reason I really would like mask mandates is it's very hard to condition a child when not all the other children are under the same conditions, and also when those conditions are constantly changing. So my daughter's in kindergarten right now, and I've reached out to the teachers, they've done an admirable job. Uh, but when you go to recess, I tell my daughter, take the mask off, you're outside enjoying, right? Trying to follow the signs the best I can. When you come back inside, put it on. And I have these conversations with her, and often it's, oh, I forgot to put it on, so I was in the hallway for a little bit. Well, how long? I'm not sure. How many people were there? I don't know. Do you exit from the classroom? I don't know. If you've ever tried to get details from a five-year-old, it's, I don't know. So we, we, we piece it out. So I reach out to the teacher, the teacher explains that they're doing everything under their powers to accommodate. And so I have no fault to put on the teacher. But if the entire class was under the same condition, then it's a lot easier for that teacher to make that a focus of, hey, guys, don't forget to put your mask on, or take it off. It, it's a condition that's equal to everyone, and it's easier to enforce. So on my side, whereas I don't want to put another parent in a position where they are being subjugated to something they don't like, because that's what I'm currently under, my preference on that side would be to do so because it allows the childrens that, that are struggling with it, the younger demographic, um, to have some assistance. It also puts them in a position where they are, uh, in equal conditions with other kids so that the, the teachers that are having to enforce this quote-unquote, um, can do so in one fell swoop versus trying to make it an individual side. Um, from there, once again, if we want to leave it up to, uh, parents' choice, the CDC guidance says 12 and under, you should be masking indoors. Or excuse me, 11 and under. 12 and over, if you're vaccine-eligible, then it's really up to you. So let's not make it a vaccination status. I know that can't happen with the Department of Education guidelines. Let's base it off of age. Because if you're 11 or younger right now, you don't even have any other mitigation factor other than the mask. And then if you're wearing a mask and 70% of your class are, it takes away some of the efficacy of it. Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? It's all the citizens here. All right, uh, agenda review. Uh, do we have any items we need to add to the agenda? Jeffrey?
Can we please add, uh, visitors to the school?
Visitors? After Jean's at work? Okay, Nate, what do you have, sir?
Um, high school communication.
Uh, where are you gonna put it?
Page eight.
Page, uh...
Or, I guess, anything continuing.
You wanna add that to, uh, let's see, what did I have?
Aye.
All right, high school. What are we, what are we going to make, high school?
High school communication, sorry.
Anybody else? Uh, we're moving to, uh, for consent, I think.
Sir? Your phone, hey?
Please. The key can't get in with the...
You wouldn't have gotten far. Thank you, sir. All right, uh, you want to consent?
Yep.
Okay. And, yeah, uh, let's see. Uh, I don't actually recall sending emails, I don't remember, it was two weeks. Masks related? Okay. I think we're gonna be bad boys today, I'm gonna try to, you know, continue to be worse. All right, so let's go on to letter E. Mask matrix. Let's see, we've sent one, we have one down. All righty. All righty, just for a walk.
I'm updating your numbers yesterday, knowing full well they may have changed today, but I try to do it within 24 hours of your meeting. Um, the first page has the county data and the Deerfield data. That hasn't changed, um, using the CDC metric. It would indicate that both county and community are in the universal masking category under the substantial, um, levels of transmission. The, again, the third page will just show you how we calculate that, and that is by dividing the number of cases divided by the Deerfield population times 100,000, and that puts us at 429.9. So 100 is considered substantial, Deerfield is, um, at 429, or 430. Say it again?
Almost, almost five times the number.
Correct.
Five times.
About four points.
Almost, right, yeah.
Um, and then, so page, back to page two, current information, Rockingham County, as we just said, is substantial. Um, active cases in Deerfield currently is 13. The number of cases in the Deerfield community school is zero. The percent of the population fully vaccinated went up a teeny bit, uh, to 52.1.
I think earlier today, Deerfield was at 14, so I think it's about...
You check in every 10 minutes?
Uh, it's, it's just on my desktop, though.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we currently have a plan in place, so speaking of that, are we gonna discuss this? Jeffrey?
I would like to make a motion that we make masks mandatory at DCS with the option to review it at our next school board meeting.
Second. Motion by Jeff, second by Nate. Jeff, it's your motion, so talk about it.
Yeah, so last meeting, you know, we were at seven cases, the meeting before that, we were at four. Um, and for anyone, if anyone's listening to this, you know, this is something that I personally spend hours per day thinking about in my head, what the right thing to do is. Um, I'm not a scientist, I'm not a public health policy expert. Um, you know, I've often said, I wish the state would just step in and kick this can to us, but they have, you know, here we are. Um, I think that, I don't believe that the right move is following their matrix and waiting till Deerfield gets down to four. You know, what that right number is, but I know that from our last meeting, when the cases went from seven to 18, I realized that, you know, this is still a virus that's out there and can spread like wildfire. I don't know where that cluster broke out, we don't keep that data. But there it happened, and we had no ability to, you know, make changes aboard. Um, given that we're still at 14 cases, I think it's the appropriate thing to do. Um, and for the people in the public that are gonna be frustrated, I just have to say that, you know, this is not about trying to muzzle the kids or control them. I have kids that go to the school, and I worry about them, and I worry about any kids that might catch COVID. Um, you know, kids that are 11 and under don't have, uh, you know, you don't have the social distancing we need for them. Um, and this is what we can do to protect them at this time, and that every time, I feel it's the right move for the school.
Nate? Um, I'd like to, uh, agree with Jeff, I think that's a key point. And I think that more than that, it's not about just the kids at our school, I think it's about the community. And I think that there are people at home in our community who, like the 11 and unders, can't get vaccinated, even the most of the people who are older than 12 years old. And to those grandparents and caregivers and guardians at home, uh, to have their child be bringing a virus home to them, um, is not something that I would, I want to be responsible for. I, I would rather take the precautions to protect our kids at our school and also the members of our community who, uh, we can look out for.
Andrew?
Um, I, I just, I just want to, uh, acknowledge how difficult this decision is for the five of us every single week. This decision is so, um, difficult, and, um, I want to thank, uh, Jeff for bringing that motion forward. And, um, it is every single day, I, I agree with Jeff, it's every single day that, uh, and, and probably all of us as board members spent time, um, giving hours over to looking at, uh, data, research, um, case studies in other states, uh, so on and so forth. So I, I would like to, um, also say that I support that motion. Um, and I, and, and at the same time, it breaks my, my heart in some ways 'cause I, I know that it's a difficult decision. I think about tiny little children with masks on and not seeing their teacher's faces and so on and so forth. But as I continue to weigh that and look at the data, nothing is saying that the Delta variant is, no data that I see is saying that the variant is going down, that there, there is any plateaus or insight. And we are not yet in the, everybody's in their house with the windows closed, um, piece. So I, uh, I, I just wanted to say that I am in favor and support that, as difficult as the decision is, as very difficult as the decision is, I support it.
Andy, go ahead.
Um, so I guess I don't support the motion. Um, some of the language that I'm hearing is around worrying about, you know, the children catching COVID. I don't see the data to support that. Um, and I obviously hear both perspectives on the subject. I also see the data, um, you know, to support both the perspectives that I'm hearing about. Um, but I understand that different families have different living scenarios and people at risk within their circles. Uh, at the beginning of COVID, my family chose to, um, uh, reduce our circle to a limited number of people to protect ourselves. We made that decision as a family. So I believe if I can make that decision as a, a father and a husband and for my children and my family, that others can make those decisions for their families, and I don't want to be the person to tell them what to do.
What's, um, what question, this is probably more directed at you. What's the sense inside to the school staff? Do you have a kind of a pulse on, on where they are in this?
Um, so I, I put together, I, um, surveyed from asking what, uh, in terms of, and it was just, again, super simple. Do you feel that we should transition to having to wear masks well in school? Or do you feel like we should continue to have masks optional? And, um, 58% said, um, yes, I would like to staff and students to wear masks well in school. 42% said no. Would that remain optional, keep it optional? It's really close to call. I do wish that I had asked for grade level, because I think you're gonna find more yeses and nos at a certain grade level, elementary versus middle school. Um, and I think that everybody, I, I did add an opportunity for people to put comments just to see where people were at, and a lot of people, even people who said, everybody has their reasons why they want it or they don't want it. Um, you know, it, it's a, it's a very tough call right now. I don't want this decision to be placed on my staff, though. I don't think that I want that message out to the community that little staff wants it, so...
No, and I...
Right, and I'm just, right, making sure that that's clear. Um, I want the board to make the decision that they think is best for our community, and we will support you 100%. Um, and the staff will, they will support you, I know that they will. It's a heavy, heavy decision. Everybody feels very strongly one way or the other, and there is no right answer. Absolutely no right answer. Bonnie Heisey feels still pretty strongly that it's not if, it's when. Um, we have the Deerfield scare coming up pretty soon, and it's... I'm even, I'm more worried about that than the other.
I'm all for cancer, babe. I'm fine with that.
I...
No. I'll, I'll take the reduction in traffic for, for a weekend. I don't need any traffic. Andy, did you end up either...
She's gonna ask about the nurse and what's...
So, my thoughts on this, I, I agree more with Andy on this. And I, I have said all along that it's not gonna be a matter of, of if, it's, it's gonna be a when. It's just when does when occur? So for me, you know, we look at this, you know, we look at this matrix, right? And we apply either county data or town data to it, but we're not looking at the school's data. So when you look at it, it is, it starts with sporadic cases where it happens, and it's a facility transmission. Those are cases where it's in school, isn't it? Leaving them optional. Choice is still there. Put in place a mechanism, so if there's a single case, we start targeting masks. Put in place a mechanism so that if you have multiple cases, you universally mask. It has a clear beginning and a clear end. It has a defined beginning and it has a defined end. I don't see a situation where we are not gonna be able to stop COVID in that room building. It's coming in at some point. For me, I've looked at this continually as, because I know we're not gonna stop it, I want to have as much normalcy as I can prior to us having to draw a much heavier mechanism in place. I'm not entirely convinced that the masking, the masking isn't gonna prevent it from coming. We go fully masking tomorrow, you're still gonna have a situation where COVID comes in the building. There is, it's an inevitability, right? And so, I don't support it, partially because it, I, I hate the undefined beginning and the undefined end. And, and I've been fairly clear about that all along. If there was a scientific bit, I thought we made a good step in the last meeting about putting a beginning and an end and a start and a stop and trigger points. Um, but most certainly, we're gonna vote on it, the beauty with, the way the system works. There's five people sitting here, three make a decision, and we're gonna move on, and I'm gonna be done talking to them. So, Jeff?
Can I, am I able to clarify my motion for the start date?
You were, yes.
So I'd like to have an effective Friday to give teachers a chance to help our students tomorrow. And I would also like to make it indoor masking. And then the outdoor classrooms, or recess, the masks optional.
So is that an amendment?
Yes.
One, two, seven, eight. All right, so we need to, we need to vote on the amendment first. So the amendment to the motion is for masks to start on Friday. Universal masks are gonna start on Friday, and for it to be indoors only. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Against? Three, two, the motion carries. amended language, the motion carries. Any more discussion regarding the motion as amended? None? All right, all in favor of the motion to require masks starting on Friday? We reviewed it at the board meeting.
Aye.
Well, indoors. All right, ready to, assuming Andy? Two? All right, it is what it is, I'm done talking about it. Let the staff know?
I will, and I'll get a message out to the community ASAP.
Tell them to direct their anger at us, good or bad, or whatever it is. Okay, next up. NHSBA pro, is that time here again?
Well, they moved to October, so...
Faulted out of place.
Yeah.
Okay, NHSBA proposed resolutions, I believe, Andy, are you our rep, or is it you? Andy?
I'm sorry, say again?
You are our NHSBA delegate? If you want to enroll, we're gonna talk about resolutions.
I don't have anything to cover.
I think Patty does.
Yes, you do.
You do.
So as the delegate, um, just a reminder, whoever your delegate is, um, takes your vote and brings it forward to the delegate assembly and is, um, responsible for representing your board. So the School Board Association asks that, um, this board vote on each of the proposed resolutions, and that gives Andy direction on how he should vote at the delegate assembly. It's been moved a couple of times, uh, and this year it's gonna be in October, I think the 16th. Andy, do you have it in your calendar? I think it's the 16th.
Uh, I don't, but I'm checking.
But, whatever, it's coming up, so, um, this board will need to take action. If you haven't had a chance to review them, we could do it at the next meeting, you still have time. Um, but we do need to, we want to...
So let's address that at the next meeting. Is that watch? Is it in person?
Uh, I, is it in person? I think so.
I believe so.
I think so.
It's not on my calendar.
In front of my...
Yeah. Yeah, it was, for sure. I feel like, I, I feel like I heard that it was in person. I think they're doing it in person, but they're doing it away with kind of a lunch and all that stuff.
So we are moving that to the, is that person, is that, October? So we are moving that to the Zep or Zep October or we have.
Yep. Okay.
Alright. Uh transportation, my second favorite topic. What do we have there?
Um would it be okay if I just read the update? There's a lot to it, um so it might be easier and then everyone at home can get the update as well.
Okay.
Alright, um so we have a driver that has an appointment for fingerprinting um tomorrow. And hopefully um we can get that turned around quickly. We've been calling and they've been very accommodating. Um we've been telling them with all of our staff members that we're in dire need of getting people on board, so they're they're helping. So hopefully that will happen quickly. Um we also were able to, as a side note, talking about fingerprinting, we're able to contact Department of Safety. They're actually gonna bring a mobile unit to the S A U office on Monday. Um they, we've been calling, the commissioner was very helpful at facilitating this um with Department of Safety. Our, we have a large S A U and we had at one point um forty-seven employees that couldn't start because of the backlog of fingerprints. Um and right now, we're still at thirty. So they, I'm thrilled that they're gonna come on Monday and anyone that needs fingerprints can come to the S A U. They'll do them and take them back for processing. So that's really good news and hopefully we can get this going. Um so Kelly also reported that she adjusted the bus routes um for five buses. Once this employee is cleared, that there will still need to be three double runs. But one of those is shortened and she's taken the students off the first run when possible in order to have less students in the building early and late. Um green and the new pink route will be single trips. They're still long, but all those students will not arrive until seven forty and they'll leave at two fifty. Um the new pink bus puts the original pink bus route back together, includes traveling to Coffey Town Road and picks up Church and Meeting House Hill from the purple bus. The blue will start a little later and do a second run that be, that brings in students close to the school. It will be able to get back to the school quicker in the P M. And then red and yellow are second runs that can't be absorbed into the other routes. And white will stay the same as it is now. So all of those routes are in print and when we are ready, they will go home to families. But Kelly did want you to know that she was prepared for the driver to start and what those were going to look like. Um she's hoping that this would be better for families with less students being dropped off between seven and seven-ten. She anticipates more families that are car riders may want to get back on the bus, so she'll have to monitor that closely. Um and then for drivers in training, the driver that was in training for Concord High School that had a personal emergency um should be back in training next week and hopefully early October. Um if everything goes well, we will have that driver onboard for Concord. Um in the meantime, as you probably know by now, Concord was able to provide us a bus in the afternoon. Um so they couldn't do that until their routes ended at four fifteen. But as soon as their route is done, they're loading the kids and they're getting, at least getting them back to Deerfield in two different spots, albeit late, at least they're able to get back to Deerfield in the afternoon. Um so and as soon as that driver's ready, um we'll get that bus, both A M and P M. I think that was the update.
Alright. Have you had any, I was only wondering a few days, I think in high, the high school, have you had, has anybody wanted to go to the left today? Did you get this sort of feedback?
I haven't heard, no.
Andy.
Has there been any feedback or discussion from community members about their kids coming to school early and then staying late? Has that been an issue? Have we heard anything about? Cause I know when we originally came up the bus plan, folks were concerned, so I'm just curious.
Yeah. I I have not.
Everything is settled right in, the kid, I'm telling you, the kids love, I don't, they they love it. They get here, they, in the morning, they settle right in, do games, they do homework, they get, older kids are on their devices. In the afternoons, we've been able to get the kids outside playing, so.
Shocker. Okay.
It's it's a well-oiled machine at this point.
And certainly it looks like uh at least the bus runs that are adjusted on the table were, were moving in the right direction. Were not where they need to be or want them to be.
I think she was thoughtful when she um changed them up.
They're trying to get at least some positive direction.
Yeah.
Okay.
I need to.
Um I, you probably could pending the new driver, uh and that way it's done. When she's ready to go, the routes are ready to go.
Okay, so if they already have a motion, let's.
Yeah, I just had a follow-up. So that's families, how are the teachers and the administration handling in early, staying late?
It's a long day for them.
Yeah, it is long, it is. Um but we have this, the staff that we have staying, you know, some staff are here morning and afternoon, some staff just morning, some staff just afternoon. Um you know, this, it's, they're, they're, we're paying, luckily we have a grant to pay for it. It's probably gonna cost about fifteen thousand dollars when all said and done to the staff that are staying, so.
So we're, we're, cause that's not covered in the contract, right? So they're.
Right, it's, I put it into the grant, so um that's.
Okay. Can we do, does it make sense to do any sort of like survey to make sure that people, like, is there like a rotation?
Uh no, I think, I think this.
Or are people just, or is it just like you're here early and you stay late, like you don't have a choice?
Yeah, they knew that, they knew it was probably gonna be about, I I counted on about ten weeks. I don't know if it'll be over or under, but um you know, we'll revisit that as, as we get there.
Okay.
The afternoon is more covered than the morning, we have, but we have probably about five or six staff in the morning that cover both the gym and the cafeteria.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it seems to be working out okay. The staff that's working it, they're, I mean, it's two hundred fifty dollars a week. If they're here in the morning and the afternoon, extra. So we're doing an hour, barely an hour in the morning and barely an hour in the afternoon.
So no news given?
No, we're just gonna, we're just gonna go with that.
Okay. Yeah.
Holidays are coming, a little extra cash maybe is a bad thing, alright? Alright, so I have the permission to approve the new routes pending the start of the fifth driver.
Yeah.
Gigi, you got it? Let's get the second. He's got the second. Any discussion?
Um I would just like to say I appreciate Dale's efforts to make some improvements to our situation. This looks like it'd be better and I'm looking forward to that, so.
And I would just add that I appreciate the staff who jumped in. I I know they would pay for it, but I also know that it's an investment to their uh daily routines uh and something out of the ordinary that we haven't come before, so I appreciate that.
That's all, for sure.
Thank you.
Anything else? Awesome, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, alright, so that takes care of transportation. Next up. Uh Jeff, you asked us to add visitors.
Yes. Um with the advent of the sports season upon us, we can have spectators at school events. I'd just amend our initial stance, let no visitors in the school. Um so I would make a motion that we allow visitors to attend sporting events in our school wearing masks. Um and that we allow visitors to the school at this, during the school day. So that's for extracurricular activities, because there's a school with masks during the school.
Can you clean it up? Start over.
This is not my, not my.
Please.
You might wanna separate them.
Okay, sure.
People may have different.
Are you, are you saying you'd like us to allow visitors with masks for extracurricular activities?
Yes.
Yes.
So move that.
So moved.
Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by, you want it, Andy?
I took no notes, what, second?
Jeff and Gigi.
Alright, Jeff gets the motion, Gigi gets the second. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, can you clarify with me about that? So you were saying during the day as well, volunteers.
That'll be a separate motion.
That'll be separate.
Just for extracurricular. Sports, except for.
Keeping it clean.
Keeping it clean. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that takes care of the next one. Next, you want a good discretion to the administration to allow visitors during the day while masked?
Yes.
Is that what the motion was?
That was the motion.
If that's what the motion was. So move that.
So moved.
Alright, second.
Second.
Andy, any additional discussion?
That's very open, um.
That's where it was going with.
So I, well, I'm just concerned that Kristen is gonna get a barrage of people that it's up to you and how does she, I'm thinking if I were her, how would you say, oh, well, we're gonna let this group, but not this group?
So I guess the point of it is that we're going to have visitors at the school. For example, the architects and engineers working on the project, right? We need to be able to allow people in the school. Uh I concede your point, I don't know the best way to filter that. Um. So.
And so is it, are you thinking, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but are you thinking like for official school business or?
Well, I guess I would ask the question to you guys, are we at a point where we wanna allow volunteers, parents, whatever, into the classroom or maintain the status quo? Because I guess there's two separate things there, right? There's people that need to come into the business for school business. Um.
Call them invited guests to a certain extent, right?
Correct.
Essential visitors? Is that what?
Um so I don't know the best way to word it, but we should clean it up rather than.
You have a two-minute for essential visitors, is that, is that what for you?
Um and people who are, who are considered an essential visitor, like Paul and yours who comes for U N H, you know, those are, to make, to run our school, we need those people.
Right. Those are invited guests, yeah.
Right, but they're still visitors and they're still invited into the building. The architects and the engineers are essential to the running of our school. So but volunteers is very different than our essential visitors.
Yep. I will amend my motion that we allow essential visitors to the school.
Okay. Second amendment?
Thank you.
All in favor of the amendment?
I don't think there was a motion to.
I think we have, we have.
Oh, was, was it seconded though?
We had a motion in second.
Oh, we did, okay.
I seconded the first one.
Yeah, that was the second. Oh, okay, sorry, I missed that.
So.
So wait, this is, we're just adding, we're just taking it to.
Essential.
Essential visitors.
During the, during the day.
During the day.
Yep, okay. So this is just to approve the amendment to the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Any additional discussion on the motion to allow essential visitors into the building while masked?
Does it need to stress like during school hours or what? Is that better?
I think that's good, thank you, yes.
Alright, any additional discussion? Andy?
Uh.
Sorry, Gigi.
I was just gonna say inviting um folks from outside of our community into the school does increase the risk to the school itself. So I I support, you know, bringing visitors while they're masks into the school for extracurricular and I support allowing essential visitors in because some of the essential business that we're taking on is expanding the school. Talking about high school options, so that is important stuff and we do need to work with those people during their business hours. Um but bringing in people from outside of Deerfield um could impact our numbers within the school itself. So I just wanna point that out.
Any additional? Gigi, you had a thought?
All, all I was um wondering is clarification maybe from Kristen, although it was like. Is it, is, like, how have things been going without any volunteers? Are we, are our classrooms feeling okay about that? Is it?
Um I think it depends on, I, I mean, I think, I think teachers would love to have volunteers in calm and and help out. Um but we also know that there's a risk to that. And I know that I've been approached by, you know, girl scouts and P T O would like to use the building to have their meetings. And we've got Jack's Driving School and Cub Scouts and, you know, do we, do we open our, our building for them as well? Do we consider them essential visitors? Do we? I, I'm. Uh so it's, it's, it's a, it's a fine line right now. Okay.
So parents can watch sports.
Yeah.
People can come in for, that helps out for the schools. That's what we're still not open for the Girl Scouts, we're still not open for Boy Scouts, whatever the other outside organizations would be at this point. And that would be the status quo for the time being.
We encourage them to use the outdoor classrooms, so those are only available. And happy to let them use phones.
And and I, I agree with that stance at the moment. So that being said, do we have any additional discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Next up, we had Nate wanted to discuss high school communication.
Yes, thanks. And I brought up an informational, uh two minutes ago, um a piece that I, I, I think I want this actually a number of years ago when this came up most recently. Um obviously, the high school concern is a big one that the community has been concerned about for a long time. So the last time the board was talking about it, a few years ago, I think I started that. I added onto it to bring it up to date. I put it into the draft um for the last meeting, but it was the first time you had seen it. It's, it's in there again, or hopefully not over the last month, people have, have to think about it. Um I, I don't know if you can finalize it now, but are there any edits or questions that you have after looking at it? Um there's the one, sort of one-page written piece about the history, last twenty years or so, where we are, how we got here. Um there's also, just in terms of trying to get the word out to our community, um I think we've all kind of figured out that communicating is a difficult thing, especially when the tools aren't exactly there for us to do it very precisely. So using Facebook, I think, can, can get the word out. And I'm thinking that if we put that, sort of rather than posting a whole thing, which probably people won't really read it, you know, if I posted that little, a little figure that I made and linked to it and I posted the, the written piece on the S A U website and then put the link to it on the fan, people could, you know, see it on Facebook and people would recognize it, but additional information would be on the S A U website or our whole end website. And so that would be where, it'll be the more accurate, updated info. So I'm looking for your thoughts on that, any edits on those two pieces. Uh it doesn't have to happen right now, but if you have any edits, then we could maybe finalize it next meeting for us. If, unless you're happy to go and happy to.
So I think what my thought is, is if anybody has any edits, it's gonna be made for the next, you can imagine at the next meeting when the push through is approved or we discuss the edits if there are.
And any questions now before we?
Yeah, clarification, what are the file names that I should be looking at? Yes.
One is, it's like a brief history, I think, are you gonna go look in the, look in the draft? Um one is.
I know they're.
A recent history of your.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
And the other one is F B post, C F S.
Uh that, that, okay, I saw that one.
That's the C R. They would be linked, you know, like I said, the F B post would go on Facebook. It would be linked to the other piece, which would be posted on the, on the S A U website. Is my spot for comment? But I'm open to other ideas if you want.
I'm wondering, um I know, I'm, I was trying to help edit the second bullet. So I wonder if we just say, in rare cases, students may be assigned to a different school.
Okay.
And then contacting me, I would then share the two ways that that could happen.
Okay.
Okay.
I.
One of the edits and there was a couple of lines in the longer piece. And I said it to the, uh, Jeff.
Sure. My only, um it, it looked good when I read it this afternoon. I thought the um only thing we can maybe do is highlight more, you know, we'd say some changes may be coming.
Yeah.
Um there seems to still be a lot of confusion in the community about what direction we're going, you know. You got in that kind of last paragraph.
Yeah.
Um you know, talking about the committee submitted, or those for six nearby schools, asking the board prioritizing that initiative. That's clearly the direction we're still aiming and maybe we wanna highlight that more than just burying it deep in all that.
Okay.
For the deeper act and time.
Yeah. So put something about that on the Facebook piece, kind of bolt to that fact.
Yeah, I think it would be.
It's on the board's currently discussing.
Options for the future.
Options for the future with. Okay. Uh anything else regarding that? Alright. That brings us to our P T O update. Do you have an update for us?
Um we just have a couple of things going on, our ongoing shoe that I've talked about a lot of times. We're still collecting shoes till the end of this month. Um we're planning the townwide yard sale on October ninth. And we have a flower sale happening on Saturday, mom's beautiful home, so in case you're interested, stop by and we'll be happy to sell you a lot.
Awesome, and I thought I saw steel, we're looking, trying to get steel to Harding Metals.
That is eighth grade fundraiser.
That's eighth grade, I'm sorry, I apologize.
But that's still with me and Kelly.
So hey, why are you part of the eighth grade fundraiser while you're here? We need steel.
Yes, we need any metal, they'll take aluminum cans, they'll take washers, dryers, any metal you got scrap.
The difference this year is we're bringing, we don't have a dumpster this year, correct?
Right. Correct, you can drop it at Harding Metal between six-thirty and three.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless you have a job and then you call up and we'll find a way to come pick it up for you and we'll find somebody who doesn't have a job to go drop it off.
That will be their job.
People just email me, email me if they, if you need it picked up.
Okay.
Mr. Greaves not here, so all other duties as aside.
Sign him up.
Oh, nice.
And that is, uh and then if you do bring it to, I'm just trying to capture the thing I wrote on Facebook. So if you do bring it to Harding Metals, let them know you're from Deerfield for the eighth graders and then they'll weigh your, your medal or your truck on the way in and the way out and all that good stuff and that's on the floor.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't jump on that one, but I wanna make sure you put them on.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the? Any other questions for the PTO or the eighth grade fundraising, if you add it to their report? None, alright, uh, Nate, do you need tech for us?
No.
Alright.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night. So I'll have a update then. Uh, Principal Withy.
Yes.
What do you have for us?
Three pages.
Three pages, let's have it.
Ooh, talk fast, really, really fast. Um, I think Candy for, uh, Candy did a transfer in, transfer out for, um, to update the school board, so um, this school year, we have had thirty-five students transfer in and we've had twenty-seven students transfer out. At the next meeting, I'll have an updated enrollment sheet for you, the enrollment sheet that we use, just so you, um, cause our October first, uh, reports are due and, uh, so we'll have the most updated. Right now, we're sitting at about five twenty-one, um, including our preschoolers and, um, we, we have stu-, just in terms of breaking down that data, we had the transfer outs for students that moved out of state. Um, we had about six students move out of state, we had four, um, go to non-public or out of state, non-public schools, like a private Catholic school. We had sixteen that transferred to another district in state, um, so those are the reasons why people left our school to go to another school, yes.
Is that year on year? Is that all at summer? What is the timeframe?
Uh, yeah, between, between the end of last year and the beginning of this year.
Fifteen.
So over the summer and into September, that's what we've had so far.
So effectively, we planned for them to come this year, but.
Correct, so we, we have twenty-seven of those students that we thought would be here moved out, but thirty-five, um, that we weren't expecting moved in.
Yeah.
So we're, we're a blessing.
Taken.
Yes, we are, yes, we are.
Blessing.
Go expansion.
Um, I'd like to give a huge shout out to Chris Kofis, Kofos, um, he was here, I don't know if any of you know, last, we had a, uh, that last crazy storm. We had a delivery truck that was bringing our lovely new furniture for the library, got stuck in Pennsylvania in the storm that was down there, couldn't get out of Pennsylvania. So on that week of the, um, end of August, beginning of September, we expected our furniture to come in that Wednesday, then that Thursday and it didn't come in until Friday the third, when we were all at, there was no school that day, but Chris and his crew worked and they expected the truck to be getting off four and then coming at ten thirty back in. So Chris, um, stayed until I offered to come, he absolutely told me absolutely not, um, so he, he got the furniture off the truck and ten thirty that night. So God bless the truck driver who brought it here and I don't know what we'd do without Chris, I really don't. He spent the entire next week building these, these all came, there was just flat boxes, just everything, he built these by hand over the next week. Um, and Beth and Patty Moore, Beth Walsh and Patty Moore spent hours unboxing and filling these shelves and getting it set up. And it's still a work in progress, but it's definitely in progress. Brian moved, um, as you can see, those two shelves were up here, he moved there, everything's on wheels and fairly easy to push around, like get it out of the way. So everything is movable and, um, Beth is loving it, today was the grand opening, um, part of the tape of the arrows on the floor, that will come up on, once kids know what to do, uh, so we're very excited for our new space and very grateful to the board and the community for, um, letting us purchase this, the materials. Uh, as you can see, they're in the circulation desk, while moving the computers here to a straight line as opposed to kind of opening everything up, um, so. Yeah, it's, it's been a process, a prob-, uh, uh, work in progress, but it's been great. And thank you to our PTO, you forgot to mention your coffee camper, the delicious coffee camper.
I love coffee camper.
Yes, so they came on last Wednesday, um, and brought us egg sandwiches with bacon, without bacon, with cheese, with cheese and bacon. Um, juices and fruits and apple, uh, yogurt parfaits and the staff, it was quite a treat for the staff, it was greatly appreciated, so thank you to our.
Yeah, we had iced coffee this time.
And iced coffee and sweet tea.
So how do we get that to stop on South Road? On Saturdays and Sundays?
Andy?
Only if there's cinnamon rolls and, you know.
Right around number one oh something.
There's a couple of stops, just give me a school bus and.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll be paying.
If you could drive a school bus, Andy, you are, you'd open up a can of worms. Um, so our professional development Wednesday start, as you know, it's a, it's the culture at this school that every Wednesday is professional development Wednesday, we call it PD Wednesday. It's been around since, um, before my time, that's for sure, um, and teachers stay every Wednesday from three to four o'clock, um, and last year, or two years ago, um, I started, I organized it a little bit more than when I had my first year, so the first Wednesday, as you know, is dedicated to a staff meeting, our second Wednesday was, um, today was our second Wednesday. We have afternoon medleys, so the staff, um, volunteer to be a host of a different topic, um, this week we talked about MLP, SLOs. Um, we, uh, so a couple of middle school teams were working on social studies, we had some people working on math, we had, um, our reading specialists have been, um, working with third grade honor comprehension program that she had bought for them, so everybody is, uh, doing, was doing something different today. We have, um, an, uh, uh, an inclusion dis-, uh, equity group started by Michael Trong and Heather Swanson and Sarah Potter, they started reading book last year and they carried over uh, that work this, and we have a huge group of teachers that are getting together to talk about those things, so, um, that was really exciting to see those afternoon amendments come together today. The third Wednesday is always a time for teachers to work independently, individually on, on their goals for the year, their SLOs gathering, um, their own, doing their own, some people watch webinars. Um, and then the fourth Wednesday is always dedicated to team time, so we've started that back up, um, in, in September and will continue that for the rest of the year. Um, our first, uh, technically our second, but we had our A-Day Admin Day, yes.
Hi, David. Um, looking ahead to the year, the sort of the front of us a lot of time, cause I'm not asking what the board's meaning or anything, but I'm excited to hear about the, the inclusion movement that I got to hear about.
Yeah, yep, diversity, equity and inclusion.
Yeah, could there be a chance for the board to hear more about?
Oh, I'd be glad to, for sure.
How many more are there to be, will a teacher come and tell us, or you could tell us, but I'd like to hear more about that.
Yep. Yep. Um, in fact, I, I, um, Michael Trong is going to be doing a presentation, uh, at the October for professional development on culturally responsive, um, teaching, so, uh, there'll be a lot of that work being done. Um, and I, we, I'd be glad to have the committee, a couple of people come or, um, he would come and show you his presentation and.
Yeah, please, thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Um, so Admin Day, uh, we met yesterday, we met, uh, I, we divided the group up, the first group that we met with, we always, I always meet with, we always meet with an IAA team. Um, and then yesterday was K, third, first and seventh, and then the next A-Day will be the opposite of a, so it'll be, um, another I.A. I think I have music, I mean, um, a library set up for that day and, uh, second, fourth, fifth and sixth and eighth. So, um, just to do a team and a teacher check-in, a student check-in and a data check-in and I also, um, brought in the idea of successes and celebrations so I could, uh, tell the board that the great things are happening. Um, kindergarten is working on their fair projects, everybody is, but they, um, specifically, they were doing a paper mache project and, um, some kindergartners like to get dirty and some don't, uh, so that's been fun, um, they are working on their caterpillars, um, in science right now. They started their writing and their math, they're working on gathering data about that, um, and they specifically wanted to make, mention that they love being together on the playground and playing together. Our first grade, uh, learners are, are trying to become a little more independent, they're working on understanding their literacy jobs. Um, they are in the process of reading Charlotte's Web is the big book that they're reading right now, they just finished Elmore the Elephant and talked about how they're special and unique and of course, they have the butterflies going as well. Um, third grade, uh, recently did a slow motion video on parachute dropping, I don't know if anybody here is a third grader or not, but it was really cool. Oh, wow. Um, so they started their Native American unit, they're going to go out on Thursday around the fire pit and, um, we're gonna have an elder visiting, AKA Mr. Ferdinand with a wig. And, um, he's going to tell the legend of how Chipmunk got its stripes around the fire pit, try to make it as authentic as possible. Um, our seventh grade is doing a great job, they started their bootcamp, middle school is, is all middle school is doing something like this, um, to set expectations. They're setting goals with their seventh graders, doing our copy doing good, having lunch with the kids, small groups of kids coming up and having lunch. Really working on developing those relationships with our kids. Um, and I don't know if you have a seventh or an eighth grader in with Mr. West or Mrs. Radcliffe, but they're working on this awesome survivor-esque outdoor survival unit. Um, complete with, um, making fire with flint and steel, um, and extra credit if you can get an ember going. So, uh, there's a lot of components, um, Mark and Ashlyn have developed challenges, they work on teamwork points, there's a winner of that teamwork. They nominate a survivor of the day, so the kids have really, um, bought into this and, um, Mark and, and, uh, and Ashlyn and our intern Noah are, are really working, um, well on with this big project. Um, so those are the updates of some of our grade levels, next time I'll have the other grade levels for you. Our student picture day went well on Thursday, um, last Thursday we had them, retakes will be taking place on the next month or so, I'm looking to Candy, Dr. Kelly. Um, but we did not do class pictures because we didn't have our advisory magnets, as you recall, we were, um, building the month of September, uh, around our advisors and our magnets and giving kids, getting, giving teachers a chance to get to know the kids and the kids to know the teachers and, um, in fact, today I'll tell, in a few minutes, I'll tell you about the magnet meeting that was, happened today. So advisory magnet pictures and type plus pictures will happen in, um, during retake day. Our architects and our engineers were here, not to steal your thunder, um, Jeff, but on, on Friday the tenth, Jeff will probably get into more detail about that. Um, our soccer volleyball cross country is up and running, soccer has had a couple of games, um, we also had some cancellations. Um, but volleyball played at Portsmouth yesterday, I spoke to the few of the girls who tell me that they actually held their own against Portsmouth. So that's great because they have not been together for very long, um, and, uh, it's a really cool group of girls that are playing this year. So, uh, we'll reschedule our cross country meet that was postponed due to the inclement weather, it didn't come until seven fifteen or so, no, six, six o'clock. Decided to start raining a little bit before, it was pouring when we got here, right at quarter off, so we did have to postpone, we were worried about the, uh, hurricane winds that were coming through. When Denny Gregg sends me a, um, weather update, it's serious business, so I take that very seriously. Um, so we'll reschedule that for sure, uh, the eighth grade magnet had a Google Meet today, so just to fill the board in, sorry, this is the last, this is the last thing I promised, like for honest. Um, they're working on, uh, the eighth graders met in the cafeteria to talk with all of the magnet advisors, um, there's, there's going to be five magnets, um, we'll have the maker magnet again, Mrs. Clark and Mrs. Barry. Uh, Mr. Dudley is doing more of a kindness and music, um, magnet, which is a little different than what he's done in the past. Um, it's hard to get out into the community, uh, so his, he kind of switched his up a little bit. Um, so Mr. Dudley, Mrs. LeFond will be with that one, the outreach magnet is always with Mr. B and Mrs. Swanson, uh, the snapshot magnet with Mrs. Dewar and Mrs. McGovern will be back in place. And, um, Miss Liskowski, who's our long-term self for eighth grade science, and Mr. Greve are doing a magnet together called Live It Green. So they wanted to attract just enough boys, but not too many. Um, and, and enough girls to balance it all out, so they, um, it's kind of an outdoorsy recycling, it's still the same theme, but they, they are switching it up a little bit. So Living It Green is their magnet, as I said, the kids will be working on their cover learners this week in ELA, they'll have their interviews with the magnet advisors and then magnet advisors will get together and, and pick the magnet groups and they'll find out probably sometime next week, so it was a big deal today in eighth grade. Uh, and just some upcoming events, um, thank you to Bonnie Heisey, who again arranged the staff flu clinic, which is this Friday the seventeenth. Our abandoned chorus will be doing the opening ceremony for the Deerfield Fair as per tradition. Uh, Chris Motito will start his monthly meetings with our middle school, um, starting the, uh, week of, of the fair, actually on that Tuesday the twenty-eighth and that Wednesday the thirtieth, they'll be out to work with sixth grade, seventh grade and then eighth grade on Wednesday. Um, he has a whole list of, um, topics for every single month that I'll share, I'll be having to share with the board the next time. Um, and then, uh, just a reminder that there's no school on first of October for the fair day and no school the following Friday for our teacher workshop day, which is also Columbus Day, Indigenous Day. So. Phew, thank you for your, for listening and being an attentive audience, I'm done.
Very much, any questions, Principal Withy? Okay. Uh, CRV?
No meeting yet.
That's not met.
No.
Alright.
Yeah, a little bit of a, we were supposed to, our first meeting was supposed to be this week, um, but we will be rescheduling.
Okay.
Can you take that, I'm still on that list.
Oh, yeah, for sure, we'll, we'll send out an email. And with Erica Martin moving on, it was like, oh my gosh.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was wondering, cause I know that Erica is gone, so.
Yeah. Brooke Liskowski is going to take over, um, here, so.
Okay.
She's everywhere. Love it, alright, uh, Jeff, golden, what do you got?
Okay, so we met today, uh, with Alex Brenninger, um, they're, as Kristen said, uh, toured the building last week. They need to come back out, the architect's due for, to finish the other half, um, they got through half of it. Um, they've got the three D model completed for the school, um, based off the planes that they got from us. Um, no major issues were identified that they're wildly concerned about, except for ongoing roof leaks. Um, right now, so you guys all know where we're at, we're still kind of in that information gathering stage, um, both from finishing up the building, what we have and then also the information gathering stage as far as talking to staff, um, they did a presentation on, until September first to the staff. Um, they'll be sending out a survey to them, uh, next week and then conduct interviews with them on October eighth. Um, then they'll be meeting with administration, um, October fifteenth for pen and revision session, taking all the information that they've gotten from the staff, from administration and, and conduct the revision session. October, November is when they'll begin putting pen and paper, um, the question that I had for them, um, was, you know, are we on track? You know, are we slipping at all? And they're very confident, very sure that we are on track, that they're going to be able to have us a plan and a budget number in time for us to, or to go together, um.
Um, Candy was actually putting all that together today on a bunch of deadlines, um, I didn't look at it yet, she just put this up, it's usually the end of January. But I can get that number.
So when we have that, we wanna get it over to Jeff, just so that you can share it with them, so they know when our draft date is.
They do a lot of this work, so I bet they are on some of those.
I'm sure they, I, I have no doubt they have it, but I just wanna.
Get this year's date back.
Yeah, you know, and, and what I said to them, you know, I'll say to you guys, it's scary just because we're not building, right now it's all conceptual, we're building, it's not like we've got a foundation going in the ground. So it's scary knowing whether or not we're on track or not, all we have to go on right now is their word, um, and that's the information, I have no reason to doubt it. Um, but, you know, it, it's, until we have a, a plan and a budget, we won't know, but it's, so far it's been a great experience, they follow up, I mean, they said they're gonna do it previous meetings. Um. The, uh, kind of immediate, not immediate things that we need to begin working on, but is getting the groundwork laid for the community outreach, which I've talked about before. We have a volunteer from PTO who's not necessarily associated with PTO, but she's gonna be helping us lead that public outreach and communication effort. Um, we talked about, they, Valley Brenninger really wants to get community feedback and solicitation so they can kind of get a complete picture. One of those things they're hoping for is if we could somehow, uh, reach out to families, some of the captive bodies at the Deerfield Fair, if there was a way to incorporate that. Um, my thought was potentially Barbara Cook runs the information booth on the committee round, the information booth at the fair, getting her material to distribute, um, also soliciting back there. Um, as well as the school board, I'm just not, I mean, the school building, I'm just not sure. Like the school building, is that something we're involved with or is just teachers always seem to be in there?
Um, Bonnie Heisey would be a good person, she's taken, Cindy Hansen was the supervisor, um, but, or superintendent, which we.
Yeah, I think they're called superintendents of the, yeah.
Uh, Bonnie has taken over and some, there's, there is somebody else, um, but she's the school leader.
Alright, and I'll reach out to Bonnie and see if she's comfortable with that and then if so, I'll put her in touch with, uh, Jay from Valley Brenninger. Um.
Yes. Are there, would it make sense to have handouts, printouts made and could we have budget for that or?
So, yes, we have the budget for it, um, and we talked about trying to do a handout, the problem is, is the information that we're trying to get out right now, we're, we're not at the point where we're able to generate that material. So what we wanna be able to communicate to the town is very clearly and concisely, here are the deficiencies, our classrooms are all, don't meet the OE standards, our um, OT is set up on our stage in, in an old closet, you know, that type of information, very concrete. Um, so they thought that right now it might not get the right message across, it might clog more panic, I'm good, this kind of the feeling I project? This kind of feeling, I project, when we talked about that. They're really interested right now in trying to get the, um, feedback from the community. They're, they're what wants, so.
As in like, does the community think we need to build a new building or not?
Um, more so, you know, there's the two trains of thought there is though. We could go and build six square boxes that are our classroom and that would check that box. But they want to look at it in a holistic approach and say, they want to hear from the community to community school. What, how and what do you want in this space that you're going to be potentially spending tax dollars on?
Is there common uses of that at large as opposed to just the benefit of the school itself? And that can help gain support, obviously throughout the community. Space for parks, right, would be like one thing. And that's really probably something we should include.
Yeah, Gigi's taken the charge on that one and just begun compiling kind of every organization in town that we could talk to and should talk to. It's just, it's how, how to get that information and how to communicate with them. Do you feel like you're in a good spot with it and you need more help?
I, I mean, right now I haven't, I haven't reached out to anybody just because we're not quite at that point. But I, I mean, I think that's the, the game plan. Like, for instance, interestingly enough, via our notes and just board conversations, the energy committee in Deerfield has reached out to me and said, hey, we understand you're interested in, in a building and where we've been working with the town. Are you interested in hearing some of the ideas that we have about energy efficiency? So it's that, like, that's a great, that's a great connection. And we're, we're really, like, well, Alec Bransinger was interested in, like, all of the other organizations in town that, that we have, that, that may be interested in, like, oh, wow, I never even thought that the school could be a space that might support this particular organization.
It sounds like that we should target probably, you know, with the visioning session, the administration October 15th. We should probably try and target something right around then. So we should probably in the next two weeks, we should have reached out to them to assess them. I may send an email to Jay, but probably right around that October 15th. Because then they're going to start working on the paperwork. Time is moving so quick. I mean, we definitely wouldn't miss very long, but it's going to be careful. I will email you to Jay to try and figure out what time, what we should do. That's all I have for our update.
Any other questions for Jeff or Gigi or anybody else? All right, Nate, do you have anything for the high school?
Actually, I have a question.
Oh, there you are.
Thanks. You said early on, Jeff, one of the upcoming steps is, is to meet with administration. That, that just reminded me that, given that you both went to the workshop. I assume that this meets the administration, not just the school?
Correct, yes. Thank you.
Uh, anything on the high school option side of the equation, Nate?
Uh, no, other than we're sort of in the middle of a sort of negotiation there.
I think this will be presented when available. Yeah, I was going to say, I think it's, it's understandable for the community to understand that while we're having these discussions, there's a lot we can talk about. I do want to add, Patty just dawned on me. Municipal Budget Committee held their first meeting. It was not emailed, so I did miss it unfortunately, but it was just their organizational meeting. It will start their regular meetings in November. And probably that time of year to put the MBC update back on the agenda. There won't be much to discuss until beginning of November, but that process is starting. Bill Von Hassel was named chairman and Joanne Bradbury was named as vice chairman. And meetings start in November. It will be Tuesdays with the school sessions starting in the beginning of December.
Probably within mid-October.
Never mind, we have something Patty brought up, that we're going to be coming in at, you know, the 11th hour with this Warren article. So I don't know how that will affect the MBC, but it's something that we.
So, so the process for MBC is they handle budgets first. They start with the town side because their budget cycle is six months ahead of ours. You know, so they're keeping the process at this point. So they'll start with the town side and then because Warren articles aren't due until late in the process across the board, basically we discussed on the budget, it's like Warren articles, we're trying to discuss them, discuss them. And we started to discuss the budget and discuss the schedule and then they can call before.
I think my comment to, to them was, you know, we'll be giving the budget committee the first look at our budget. And the earlier we can have at least an estimate so that we can talk to the MBC so that we don't at the end of January come and say, and here's your Warren article.
And most certainly that first November meeting was for update from us. We'll be working on the budget and we're working on potentially a bond or a new school contract. Large items, it seems like. Uh, we don't have any contracts this year, so typically, you know, that would be another discussion. I don't know, we're, we're in a non-contract here, so we're covered there. But they'll certainly know, to be expecting the dialogue as we progress through the process. Andy, I'll get you the schedule in case you want to watch.
Yeah.
Or join in. All right, uh, that brings us to policies. We need to.
Andy is officially like the alternate?
Yes.
We only have, as the board, we have the community representative on the MBC and one vote? Or we don't have a vote?
Well, we, so the board select me in school board both places. Remember on the MBC, so there's nine elected members, three for the times, and then the two fourth point members.
Where's the vote?
Where's the vote?
But Andy would be the alternate. He can have a vote. Would he have a vote if he weren't at the meeting?
If I wasn't at the meeting and Andy was there sitting for table control, it'd just, the school would control. All right, uh, policies. I think we need to try to address some. Uh, Patty, do you want to read this?
Um, sure. BA is the first policy in your list. And Nate had some suggested edits that went into your drive. Um, I don't know where to put them, Anna, if you've had a chance to look at those yet? And maybe Nate wants to see them too.
It was, I didn't yesterday that I put them in, I called you out. But I was looking at the NHSBA version or draft. And I thought that there are a couple adjustments that could be made. One, I didn't, I thought it was out of order a little bit. I thought that starting with our goals and objectives and then going to self-evaluation seemed to make more sense than the other way around. So I, I, a lot of it was just sort of reordering some of the language they already had. And I added things like how we would identify board, which, again, the, the list of one through nine is the same as what the NHSBA proposed. And I think that's consistent with us this evening. Now, we've talked about a 30,000 foot view and looking at our board issue draft and getting too far into like managing.
Before we go on, can we talk about specific file names? Is that possible?
Sure, there's column, it's about Oxxard and BA or something like that.
Yeah, it's BA, but it probably has Oxxard in the title somewhere.
I just see BA hyphen R1.
It might be outside of the policy folder. Is it outside?
Oh, yeah, it's on the main folder.
That's.
Okay.
And it's in your binder behind you.
Andy doesn't open them.
Hey, guess what? I just, I loaded it. By the time you finished telling me where it was, it's already open. How about that?
That's powerful.
Technology.
Technology.
But I need to be plugged in. Sorry, Nate.
Of course. So then the really only, the, the only subset change I think that's in there is really at the bottom. Well, last, I, I put in a sentence which gets a little bit at how, how our self-evaluation could work. And I added, um, yeah, early in the first paragraph, I did add a couple of things about how we could identify some of our concerns, such as doing during studies, financial audits, strategic planning processes. These are things that, that happen to, to enable us to, to identify where some of the board levels that we can explore. And then at the end, I did add something about how, how do we evaluate what we're actually doing? Where do we get data from to actually critique ourselves? And I put in the idea of, of surveys from the communities and other things like that. But I think this is, is a topic that we've been discussing on the top of the ones at the board level. And I think finding ways where we can solicit feedback for ourselves, how are we doing? Is something that I think has been, been missing. And it's hard for us to, to get a good, outside of our board. I think it could be, other than the, you know, the annual vote on March, I think it would be meaningful for us as we, as we go through this process. So, um, so there's just sort of ideas there for how we.
So what is the wish of the board in regards to policy BA?
So you're saying that the one that you have in the folder has just additional language beyond?
I reorganized it. I did tweak some of the language a little bit. Yeah, we wanted a bit of additional language.
We'll react on this, we want to push it back.
Um, so this is a question I have. I read through them, uh, this afternoon. And when you talk about the review from the community, are you talking about actual evaluation or us, you mean how we're perceived by the community, how you set?
I think that there's the two, two ways to go, but I think that it's important. Some of the topics that we have, as a board have been discussing is how do we, how do we, both at the school level, within the school, and also I think as a board, as an administration, how, if, if this were an actual, you know, company at some level, some review has to happen, right? How do you, how do you assess how well you're doing? Are you meeting your stakeholders, you know, needs and et cetera? So the idea is it could, I mean, it's, it's open to interpretation. I, but I think the idea of having a survey or, or soliciting feedback from our constituents every so often is not a bad idea. And so a way to do that, I'm, I'm open to different ideas, but yeah. So the survey and definitely, and we have, what kind of data can we collect to actually help us evaluate the job we're doing? I think is a important step we should consider.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I think, I think that a lot of initial will be lost on the public, but I think a lot of communication, transparency, those type of, that sentiment is important to get out.
Um, I was just going to mention that Gigi did get from Barrett, there, there is a couple of appendices to this sample form, BA dash R1 and BA dash R2. So Kathy put those in a separate folder. I think it's board evaluation. Yeah, I think it's in a separate folder. It's not the policy folder.
It's in tonight's, it's in tonight's meeting in, as a folder.
As a folder. So if, if and when the board is ready to adopt this policy, there are some suggested ways that you can do evaluations.
I think my thought process was once the policy is in place and you address evaluation to as a, as a separate item. All right, we want to take action on this.
And move to adopt BA, Oxxard.
All right, we have a motion for Nate's add to policy BA. Do we have a second?
A second, no.
We have a motion, a second. Any additional discussion? So you got it, all in favor? Oh, sorry, Nate.
Does it make sense from the administration's perspective, whether you change it or not? Anything as we see it from your perspective?
Nope. Great. Thank you.
Any other? Andy?
So the original or the NHSBA proposed BA policy just has an appendix? And they reference some of the files that Gigi, I guess, secured for us as like tools or mechanisms to do that?
Yeah.
Do we want to include that language in Nate's?
I think we address, I think once we put a policy in place, we can address the, uh, or not, we can address the actual mechanism.
Okay.
I think that's a leaner way to do it. All right.
Um, and sorry, I have to step out. But I didn't, I just wanted to say, and maybe I, I maybe repeated what Nate said, but I think it's great to, um, I was always kind of excited when I saw the policy because I think it, it's great for us to like self-reflect on as the job that we're doing. And, and some of the tools that Barrett sent along, I think, give us some really concrete things to look at in terms of how we're doing as a board. And also I, I think that if, if we look at some of the items in there in terms of, um, some of the tools that Barrett sent and, and maybe think about looking at getting feedback from the community at large about how we're doing. I think it, it makes sense, you know, as we go into budget season, as we, as we go into the year. I think it just, um, makes sense for us. Because like having that kind of culture of feedback is, is just so important. That, that's where the learning occurs. The learning occurs when we, when we actually fully, you know, it's one thing when we get like three citizens who publicly comment, but if we can, uh, develop a system where we actually get a larger, um, way, a, a, a more collective way to get feedback from the, from the community at large. I, I think it can be really helpful to us as, as board to, um, you know, kind of set concrete goals for our board.
Any additional discussion? All in favor of the Oxxard edit to policy?
BA.
BA.
Oxxard.
Policy BA is done. Looks like DAFA?
And so I was reading through DAFA and it is a whopper.
It is.
It's, it's way in the back.
It's just, um, so this was, as a result of, um, every district in the state faced this when they received their grant audits and their financial audits. They came back when they did the DOE, did our audit as federal requirement and said, oh, you have to have a policy about this, 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 and this. So the school association responded to that and said, okay, here's your policy. So it is simply to meet those requirements and it's incredibly dense.
So under the, this only applies to federal funds. So I was thinking of the contracting requirements and all of that. It's while the number is going to be in board, it's a pretty tough to put a budget up. But then I realized it's probably not applicable to most of the stuff we put out.
Right, yeah, it's, it's, it's to regulate when you're using grant funds that you meet all the federal requirements of you. And you're going to hire a company that was off the board, do construction projects that's a whole host of hoops you have to jump through when you're using federal funds for that.
Okay.
So, yes.
Are you already fairly consistent with this?
Yes.
Have you already made all that?
Yes.
I remember this in my life where I think it is, some of the stuff that gets thrown at the government since we're in federal funding, is just obscene.
Sure.
They do a great job, but they said, well, where does it say that you're going to do that? Have a policy about it.
So we are going to look for a motion to approve policy DAFA, the administration of federal funds.
Who's second?
Moved by Nate, seconded by Gigi. Any additional discussion on DAFA? All in favor?
All right.
Next up, we have GBV, the Board of Design Communications Caucus.
So I believe, Andy, did you request for this to be put on? I think you were doing, I think you were helping do the policy reviews and you found some that were really old as in this is 1997.
Yeah.
Um, so.
I believe it was reviewed in 2004, I believe.
This one? I think this one, I don't think this one. It is an optional policy according to the New Hampshire School Work Association. Yeah, they reviewed it. The School Association reviewed it in 2004. Your newest review was 1997, so, um.
I don't know who was here at the board.
I don't know if anyone's had a chance to compare the two or consider any edits, but that's why this policy was brought forward.
I was just looking at the NHSBA, I did not even know that.
You want, we can carry it. It's, it's an, it's an optional, it's not urgent.
Can, can I ask a question maybe to solicit input from the permanent meeting pretty much event? Um, in the second, in the NHSB-
Um, in the second, in the NHSBA version, in the second paragraph, it says staff communication board.
Yep.
Ends with, um, well, well, thanks, one sentence, all communications to the board anywhere in the, shall be submitted and super dependent.
Yes.
Um, that seems like if we're having this CRV reps, for instance, like, does that, is that considered going through the superintendent or?
No.
We don't currently do this.
Correct. It will, this is more, um, you know, to, it's to respect the chain of command. So that if there's an issue, it's not going directly to the school board. You know, first it goes to the building level, then it comes to me. And if they're not satisfied with prior, say, then it would go through to you too.
Right.
But it does need committees and official bodies that are working together.
Okay.
There's an opening standard of information.
Okay. Um, I guess maybe if we have a way to, way to meeting for this, I do, we're just curious, do you feel like it, does this meet currently what we do? And do you feel like you can just be able to support it to do your feel? Or would you, from your perspective, recommend any changes? Or would you recommend sticking with the whole one going on here?
Okay.
I would appreciate your thoughts on that from here.
I can do that, yeah, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna push out a word in the next meeting? Where you hear that? Okay. That brings us to GCQC, the staff resignation policy, which is also getting a little long in the queue.
Yes, that was another, um, Andy helping with review and identifying another nineteen ninety seven policy.
It's very old, or was that?
Um, so again, that, again, this is an optional policy. You can choose to have it, not have it, um, deviate from the school board's version. This is one that's pretty open. For what yours is.
What is the wish of the board in regards to GCQC?
I think that makes sense and I'm happy to move that. I guess again, like, could we be, as I can change, or is that still accurate for our practice? I guess seems to make sense for the board to make it, I think that might have been a question over here.
Or the exit interviews on those resignations?
Uh, I didn't see accident.
But, well, the staff resignations, the school board association, or no, that was the Alton School District, sorry, that we put in as a sample. Um, so I think Andy, you, you got those, right? Did you get those or did I get those?
I think you did, 'cause I don't.
I don't remember.
As, as I'm looking at the existing policy.
Yeah.
It seems to follow our standard kind of operating procedure quite thoroughly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, I see what you're asking, sorry, I'm a sort of.
Yep.
So I feel, I think, I think Nate's question is, is do you agree that that follows the current operating procedure?
Yes.
In which case we should reaffirm it. And move on.
Yes.
Yes. So I will look for a motion to approve GCQC, the existing policy.
Definitely.
Additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, GCQC has been reaffirmed.
Into the present.
Into the present. We are on to I, uh, IJOK, the Family and Community Partnerships Caucus.
Yes, and I believe this one got pushed down the road a little bit. There was also an Oxnard version of this policy. Good luck.
The Oxnard.
Nate gets those edits and it's great.
Oxnard.
And maybe it's the eleventh hour.
It's okay.
Added a little bit of language, the Oxnard edit.
I think there was an additional paragraph at the end and then we went off and had some conversations. So I'm not sure where we stand with that.
Yeah. And, um, you, the, the, as of a few meetings ago, administration brought back sort of, uh, your, your proposal, your edits that you got inside these conferences.
Yes.
And is that the J A? I got like the big, I'm trying to find it.
Yes, it's the IJOKA.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's.
The IJOKA is the one that was edited, amended, passed beyond, passed through administration and is now on the board. Okay, so do we wanna discuss this as the IJOKA, Oxnard administration edited policy?
Yes. I'm happy to discuss it. I am also happy to, uh, just being author of the other version, I'm happy to, to remove the yellow to go into the school proposal. I'm happy to discuss it once you're ready, if, when ready, I'm happy to.
So we wanna.
So it's a school's color.
Okay, so why don't we, in the next meeting, bring a very clear version of the school's draft and discuss that?
Okay.
And try to, uh, compress it to, uh.
One to look at.
Yes.
By all means, yep.
Yep.
You can do that.
All right.
Just clarification, so I'm happy to move this to the next session so we can talk about it. I just wanna understand the, the document format of the, the presentation. So the one that Nate authored, eh, he shows, he, Nate struck some of the language, uh, that you wanted to remove. And I think the yellow is inserting new language?
Yeah.
Is that my understanding?
Yeah, but definitely the paragraph at the end was all added by, and that's a yellow. Depending which paragraph it was.
And I think the difference between the two policies, if I'm not mistaken, is that you were looking for kind of a feedback loop evaluation tool.
Which we're just putting in policy.
Not at the board level, this is more at the school.
This is for parents and students to provide feedback to staff and administration.
And we. Right. Right.
Said that they don't think this is the appropriate policy for that.
Yes.
That's a big twist. So we want to press, you know, and review again.
I can take the track changes out, remove the yellow and not even put.
Yes.
Okay, I'll propose a vote.
I was actually gonna say I, I prefer tracked changes so that I can look at one document.
That, that, that is this one.
That's why I have both of them on my screen and I'm just, so.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we, we do the track changes so you can see what the changes were. And then if it's easier to have a clean version to vote on, we can, that's an easy fix.
Do you have thoughts on, I, would you like, or would you like?
It's beyond just this. I would like a standard operating procedure for, if somebody wants to amend or change language, we do it in track changes. So it's more of a procedural thing than having to do with this, so we can move on and I can, we can talk about it at another time.
But before changes are made or before the next meeting, would you propose any changes to the language that is in this policy before the final version comes back to us next meeting?
No, but I'm saying as someone who consumes proposed changes, I much prefer having one document that is the original language that's struck, language that's inserted, so then I'm not side by side, two documents trying, you know. So I prefer the method that you chose is basically what I'm trying to say. Yep, so I, I guess the question, um, I have is if this isn't the correct policy and we did wanna have you evaluate tools. I, I dig that feedback with this and, and what happened with Nate on this, you know. And I know you guys, I think, feel differently, but do you think there's a policy in place for it? That we could incorporate that into, or is there a different?
Yeah, I, we, we don't, I don't think we necessarily feel differently. I think that we were, that this policy talks about more about the partnerships and that we, we did, there were, the part that we left was in order to foster strong partnerships. The Dearfield Community School will provide opportunities for parents to provide feedback whenever appropriate. Um, and then, um, you know, we took it a step further to say that that's probably a procedure at the school level. Um, and then had conversations about what that might look like, what carrying it a step further is what it might look like for teachers to gather feedback. And I think it's more that culture of feedback that GG was talking about from my goals, floor goals, the administration's goals with me, the teachers' goals for the students in the class, um, just to create that culture of feedback in general.
Yeah, I think, I think it's really important. 'Cause I've always thought about it, it's like, I'm not gonna send Kristen email and say, wow, access teacher is absolutely amazing. You know, they're the best, you know, necessarily unless, yeah.
But it's supposed to.
Well, but, you know, it's the, you get this end of the spectrum of feedback and you get that end of the spectrum of feedback.
Someone's gonna ask. Right. Right.
And that, that's the minority. It's like, where's all that information in the middle? And I do think it would be, uh, just like, we need that feedback from the community, so. But I also see what you're saying. It's not the right spot, it is. We're gonna be on the track.
All right, so we're in the table, let's run for another.
Income.
Income. Uh, we have a first reading for J I C D, the Student Conduct Discipline and Due Process.
So unfortunately, we are still needing to push off the, any, uh, policies to do with discipline. Um, because we have a brand new state statute and we worked on it this summer as a leadership team. Um, and we thought we were finished, but he brought back some more changes to us. Um, and then further suggested, which I wholeheartedly agree with, looking at all of our dis- discipline policies and see if we can convince them into one comprehensive policy.
So.
Um, so we're not ready for the last two.
We and Dean working on that.
Yes.
Or I say we, you and me working on that.
Yes. Yeah.
All right, so do we wanna pull those off until we get?
We can.
Let's, until Dean and, and the administration has their opportunity.
Something to present to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
So it's just a slight reminder. All right, uh, that brings us to informational. I do have an item I wanna add. Uh, Concord has invited us.
That was on my list.
That was on your list, okay, so I'll let you have it then.
No, 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 it's fine.
Uh, Concord has invited us, the problem is I didn't write the date down, so I have to.
Twenty seven.
The twenty seven, Concord has invited the Deerfield School Board to Concord High School to have a, a walk around the building with them and a, uh, a, a brief tour. So that was, I believe, scheduled for five thirty?
I didn't have the time.
It was five thirty. Patty's gonna send an email.
I did send an email, I still remember, did I put the time in?
Does this stem from the presentation they gave to, sorry?
No, nevermind.
Does it stem from the presentation they gave to us about what they're doing, how they're doing things and?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, yes, after, when they came, they said, we would love to have you come here. And then Kathy picked on that immediately and said, don't forget, we want, we wanna show you our school and, and have. So it's not a joint meeting, but we will be posting it as a meeting because they'll all go together. Um, so she'll be posting it as a Concord meeting, I'll be posting it as a Deerfield meeting. Location will be at High School.
Okay.
Be a good opportunity for those of us that haven't been there to walk about and see what, uh, Concord has to offer to our kids.
Are we gonna take the bus there or?
There's no, I'll drive.
You're a camper.
I mean, we could certainly fit five people in a pickup truck, but.
Can you take the coffee camper and have coffee on the way?
Yeah. Unfortunately, it's a towable, so you're out of luck. That would violate, that would violate some DOT, you know, regs and stuff.
I would also say, uh.
Oh, okay.
You know, uh, Kristen and, and Brian and any of the other administrative team, who would like to join, should know a lot to do. By no means am I.
Not exclusive.
Unfortunately, I won't be able to make it, but, um, have toward the school. I can't wait for you to see it, I can't wait for you to see your C R T C.
I believe that.
Send the class there.
Thank you. I thought so. So can everyone make it? I just wanna let.
No, and I, I responded, I, I may be on the sound, I'm on the flight.
I know, me too, I'm really, um, we could probably have our own tour from Principal Reardon.
Okay.
That way people.
Well, you, you could, uh, bring that for me.
For you and I?
Are you?
All right.
Are you pulling strength today?
Maybe. He doesn't work for me anymore, so he doesn't owe me anything, but he's still, still a good guy. I know he'll do it.
Awesome.
All right, so I, I will be available, Nate's available, Jeff will be available?
Pending, while at work.
Okay, yes. And Andy?
It'll be cutting close, but yeah.
All right.
How long does it take to get there? Thirty, forty?
That's my, which way?
I don't know where you live.
Take that bus.
You have to ask that question.
Take that bus, it's like four and a half hours.
I'm sure that was a layup.
All right, uh, that was the only thing I had. Did you have anything else information on that?
I did not.
Okay, I didn't mean to stay ahead, I apologize.
No, not at all.
That brings us to our final round of public comments. We still have some public in the room? Do you folks have any additional comments? Seeing none, all right. Uh, per NH R S A ninety one eight three two K I, we are gonna be going to.
No, K and L. Sorry, it's an L.
Those lowercase letters. I couldn't even tell on my computer.
No, come on, I thought it got that way.
I know it's a lowercase letter, but, uh, Frenchman. I'm sorry, per NH R S A ninety one eight three two K L, the promotion order non-public.
Second.
All right, guys, roll call. Andy?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, it is, uh, what do we got?
Seven forty three.
Seven forty three, folks, we're non-public. Thank you very much for coming.